Call the city council meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Here.
Jermaine.
Here.
Lamore.
Present.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Michael Angeli.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Here. I'd ask that we all please rise and make a case for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather this evening, may we have clear insight, deliberate with wisdom, and work with clarity for what is best for our community and fellow residents.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Stupid flag of the United States of America. The true republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is any amendments to the agenda.
Any amendments to the agenda from the council or administration? Any new amendments? Next item.
The next item are citizen comments not related to an agenda item.
Thank you. At this time, if there's any one president which should speak at this time, there was also opportunity for a public comment at the end of the meeting. Just be mindful of the rules of the chamber, which is three minutes, but if there's any public comment this time, the podium's to my left, our left. Name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Gretchen Driscoll. I live on 320 North Inver Street in Saline. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm running for Congress here in the Michigan 7th Congressional District, which includes Monroe County, and it's a great honor to be at your meeting tonight and learn more about what's happening here in Monroe. I've had a really great time having an opportunity to meet with a lot of different organizations, whether it's business or nonprofits here in Monroe County, and you're all doing some really wonderful things. I'm excited about your downtown master plan and some other things that are going on. I was the mayor of Saline for 14 years, and I understand your challenges and your opportunities, and I will look forward to being a really strong partner with the city of Monroe as your next Congresswoman. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thanks for being here. Other comments from those present here this evening? Comments not related to an agenda item? See you none. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under Council Action, item 2143, Approval to Participate in Enterprise Fleet Management Program.
Thank you, and I think Mr. Bester, you might have a comment leading into this.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we're asking city administrations, requesting city council to adopt a resolution authorizing us as a city to enter into a fleet management program with Enterprise. We had done a work session presentation, I believe, back in late July, and tonight we're asking council to approve a number of documents, introductory documents to begin the process, but also we're asking council to authorize us to take action tonight to purchase 18 light-duty vehicles for a not-to-exceed amount of $500,000 and obviously the subsequent sale of the replaced vehicles under their Enterprise Fleet Management Program. And then also the terms authorize myself and/or Assistant City Manager Ed Sel to execute the vehicle lease agreements based on the terms provided by Enterprise. I think it's important to recognize that we're viewing this as a pilot project, subject to continuing review and evaluation, that we will provide city administration a thorough review during the fiscal year 2019-20 budget process, and that in the future, any subsequent vehicles purchased as part of this program still require the city council approval. As you looked at the cash flow analysis associated with it that's attached and updated as a result of what we're requesting tonight, you can see it's the first two years alone, a $300,000 positive cash flow for our stocks and stores fund, which handles our mobile equipment. We look at this as an opportunity to update an aged light-duty fleet, but also take some of these cash savings and apply it to probably an older and more outdated heavy-duty fleet for our Department of Public Services. So with that, we're asking council to approve this tonight. We did make one minor change from what was submitted with the packet last week. You see that highlighted on the second page of the resolution, some language also authorizing administration to sign an amendment to the master lease agreement. Both the city attorney and I had some concerns with some couple of language items, and they've subsequently amended those to our satisfaction, so we are asking for that approval tonight.
Very good. With that, this item 2143 is up for council action, so we'll need motion and any discussion. Your Honor. Councilman Lamore.
Regarding item number 2143 under Council Action, I recommend that we move to adopt the resolution authorizing the city administration to initiate participation in the Enterprise Fleet Management Program and the authority to sign the necessary documents, along with authorization to order 18 new light-duty vehicles and resale of vehicles being replaced and to enter into lease agreements for the new vehicles.
Support.
This motion by Councilman Lamore is by right. Councilman Jermaine, on item 2143, to approve the Enterprise Fleet Management Program. Any questions or comments from council? Or see you none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Michael Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda, and under item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $2,055,705.23. Two zero five five seven zero five point two three.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Councilman Lamore. Your Honor, item number 2139, please. Other items on the agenda council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? See you none. Are there any items on the consent agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items from those present here this evening? See you none, a motion would be in order.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda and that any resolutions be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lamore, that all items on the consent agenda not pulled for further discussion be accepted, placed on file, and recommendations or resolutions carried out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Michael Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Clerk, next item.
The next item is item 2139, Approval of Bids for Roof Replacement at ALCC.
Councilman Lamore.
Yes, Your Honor. I just wanted to get an idea whether or not we had any other bids come in for this reconstruction of the roof for ALCC.
I think we had a total of five. I think one of them was, and I can't tell you who the contractor was, but when the building department reviewed it, I didn't think they felt that it met the requirements that they were looking for, so I provided the list of the three other vendors that had bids that...
Okay. That was basically the only thing I wanted to ask, was that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on this item? See you none, a motion would be in order.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal regarding the roof replacement for ALCC and award to the low bidder.
Second. Okay, thank you. Motion by Councilman Michael Angeli, supported by Councilman Lamore, item 2139, Approval of Bids, the ALCC roof replacement and contract to the low bidder. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Michael Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
I have no further items, Your Honor.
So with that, we'll start with Councilman Vining for council comments.
I just want to say I'm very excited about the groundbreaking this afternoon for the new fire station. Seems like it's been a long time coming, so I'm glad we're at this step now. Also happy to see the improvements going forth at the Arthur Lasso Community Center. So I just look forward to all the new developments going around throughout the city. That's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jermaine.
I also wanted to congratulate the fire department for their groundbreaking tonight, and also, last week was a press conference for the battlefield, and it's exciting for all of us up here to be a part of history, and we're seeing history right before us by tearing down the houses, seeing our battlefield grow, and it's very exciting to me. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Lamore.
Yes, Your Honor. I would like city council to reconsider the paving project that was suggested by our city engineer for North Custer. We need to think about the, excuse me, the opportunity that is possible to improve a large piece of our infrastructure that runs east and west. Excuse me. Also, I would like to ask our city attorney to open the waste management contract and kind of go through that, so to speak. In lieu of Waste Management's request to increase our recycling cost, I would like city council to consider rescinding our contract with them. That's all I have to say.
So I guess I'll ask, is that items that you want the administration to bring up for the next meeting?
I certainly would, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bester, I guess in first class, do you have any comments? I know that there's, I'm not sure that we've had a presentation yet on the one project, and maybe a clarification of where we're at with that, or is it or is it not going forward as far as the road projects and what the timeline might be? And then the second thing was regarding Waste Management, which will take a little more information to be brought back of where we're at with that, I would think, but Councilman Angeli?
Your Honor, I guess I would question the procedural aspect of this. It's kind of unusual for a councilperson to ask for council to reconsider an issue unless the reconsideration is brought up for a motion and support, and then the council decides to move forward with reconsideration. Otherwise, I'm just looking at it from an administrative point of view. We have a lot of projects that are on the plate, we have a lot of things that are upcoming that staff is working on for upcoming workshops. I think at some point, council needs to act as a group and direct the administration to reevaluate issues rather than have one councilman ask for a reconsideration and then a review of the matter. So I think we need to talk, we need to think this procedurally.
Well, I guess I'll start. It's a good point. I'll start because I think the project is regarded as North Custer, so I'm going to ask the administration what the last action council took on it, so I guess this is the start point.
Well, I think, I'm guessing it was probably our first meeting in August where we had discussed, and this came from city engineer and myself, asking council to consider trying to work the North Custer resurfacing project into this year's construction schedule, given the opportunity with some additional money from the state, Act 51 funds, and using some of our fund balance and the major street funds to get the project completed. As part of the discussion and dialogue with the city council, we, at least from an administration standpoint, left it that there is a lot more to discuss, which we said we can wait till, you know, consider it again in the spring, but that's where we left it that night, and that was my understanding of it as well, that we weren't going to pursue it any further, at least from our end of it, to have the project completed this year. We had the discussion, obviously, with the pedestrian islands and some of the road geometrics associated with North Custer, and again, I think in a short period of time, you know, decided that point. And my intent, if you recall, was to have it on the agenda, but I just, I guess I'm not sure if we're ready for it or not, so...
So I guess that's maybe my recollection, because I was trying to think when we voted to send it one way or the other, I think it was maybe, maybe it was at a council, maybe it was work session.
It was a work session.
A work session, so we didn't take action, so we haven't made motions, but I think what the council member's saying, he wants the administration to review from a work session standpoint, not from a motion standpoint, I understand your point, Councilman, to have further discussion with the council versus, maybe reconsideration maybe wasn't the right word, maybe it's a review or read back for discussion.
I'm just...
I understand your point.
I'm suggesting just we should be somewhat firm on what the procedure is that we handle these requests.
This is kind of what I went back, because I was trying, maybe we did have it at a meeting, but I didn't think so, so it really helps me out. I don't know if this was, if it's a work session, there's no decision, so therefore, if a councilman was asking the administration to bring an item to a work session, it's different than a action, so, but I get it.
I would agree. I mean, my recollection was there was a work session and that there wasn't a vote that was taken that could be reconsidered at this point in time. If we want to have any other further discussion about procedure for bringing items for a work session, I guess that's a further discussion we could have at some point in time.
Maybe we'll work on that as well with the administration, how that might benefit everybody of bringing things forward. I know we periodically do get requests from council members to have a future topic for discussion. While it was discussed before, I'm sure it couldn't be discussed again, but it's maybe just not necessarily...
Get it?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. No, I think that if this was going to be entertained, and again, you know, we had a very specific timeline that we were working with, and again, it was essentially just kind of a mill and fill of existing road there that the window is closing fast, and even if you were to take action at the September 17th meeting, it would be pretty tight to get it in through the rest of the calendar year. But, you know, I think when we left it, you know, I was basically said, well, I'm not putting it on the agenda, I guess we got more to talk about regarding some of the couple of issues in the other. But if you were to act upon it, we'd be acting upon the proposal that Mr. Lewis and I submitted back in late August.
Okay. Councilman?
That's all I had to say, basically. I was bringing it back just because I thought it was an opportunity for us to improve our infrastructure and take advantage of contractors that are available, which isn't always something that we have to our, so to speak, ease here. So it's nice to have a contractor that's available and willing to do the project.
Your Honor, if I may, I recognize that, but I think the discussion that, at the workshop, was that there's several people, myself being one of them, I think Councilman Felder, I think the mayor, also, there was a few council people and the mayor, I believe, that had some issues regarding if we just resurface what's out there, we're not solving any of the problems regarding pedestrian safety and pedestrian crossings and the connections between the neighborhoods and the park. And that's why we asked for a little bit more thought going into the design and engineering of it before we just told the contractor to go out and mill and resurface. I mean, that was my take on the discussion that we had.
I guess I'll, before my comments besides that, is my position, not just on this, but it's been in the past, that, you know, we do the street ratings at a period of time. There's a pacer rating that identifies which the streets is identified. When we look at only one street because it's brought to attention in some fashion, it negates the opportunity to go back and look at those that may have a higher rating and need to be fixed and repaired sooner. I can think of a couple, and I would say that their rating is probably much higher than North Custer. It doesn't mean that North Custer doesn't need to be done, it doesn't mean that residents and those that travel wouldn't like to see it done, but I'm certain there's other streets that would rise above those, and that's why I always would like to see in my review of what are the other ones that were bypassed and that equally should serve the residents of getting repaired and resurfaced if they're comparable. I know traffic amounts and all that shall be factored. I know the city managers have discussed how we review those in the future and what gets some priority and consideration regarding travel miles and things like that, but we have a system, and if we just get off that, then we shouldn't just rate the roads at all. That's my view. So I'm comfortable with, as we discussed previously. You approve?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to take advantage of, like I said before, the contractor availability more than anything else, and a chance basically to improve our infrastructure a little bit sooner than normal, so to speak, because we have that extra funding. So just trying to give our, a little bit more bang for our buck for our citizens, that's more or less what I'm looking for here, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Felder.
Regarding Councilman Lamore's comments, I do look forward to discussing the resurfacing project at North Custer, or a different site, as the mayor suggests, and look forward to doing so at a different, at the next work session. I think it's kind of because we didn't have a work session tonight that we're all kind of antsy and want to have an opportunity to talk. Because, of course, we were at the fire station groundbreaking, and that was a wonderful event. Thank you to all who came out to that, and congratulations to the fire chief and Chief McCormick as well, in his involvement in that project in the future, hopefully. It was a great event, and I'm just very much looking forward to that project progressing. And the fire station, of course, is on the former Christiency site, so it's important to... On the Lincoln site, I'm sorry. Christiency as well, fits the description of what I'm getting to, which is a school that's been torn down in the past. And it's important to remember, as we go through these challenges in the city, we're not the only, we're not the only body that's affected by changes in our community. And there have been changes over time, and some of those lead to opportunities further down the road. So along the line of schools, welcome back to teachers and students in the first day of school this year, so hopefully they all have a, have had a relaxing summer and are looking forward to heading back to school. That's all my comments, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Whitman.
Yeah, I went to the barbecue fest downtown. Music was great, you know, met a lot of new people. It seems anymore that I have to keep looking at my calendar to see what all is going on in Monroe, and I'm proud of that. You know, it seems to be satisfying, the people and what they have asked for, and it's all enjoyable. I think we're doing a lot of good work. I'm so happy about the fire station and can't wait for next year to see it finished and, you know, see what all we can do with it, so, that's it.
Thank you. Councilman McCormick?
Yes, Your Honor, the fire station groundbreaking, I was very happy with that. I, based on my profession, I love it when a plan comes together, and I've been working on that plan for, since 2004, so it's been 14 years, so it was, putting that shovel in the ground was pretty symbolic for me this afternoon. A couple of things that I just wanted to ask the administration maybe to take a look at. One is, this is September, normally sometime in July, August, we usually have a quick summary by the finance director, Assistant City Manager, on the year-end finances, a year-end review. We haven't had that. I know that we're probably going to get an audit review in a couple of months, or maybe a month, but I kind of miss Ed's 10-minute overview of where the budget ended up, so I'm asking if we could put that on a workshop calendar?
The auditors will be here next week, right? So Ed's pretty well got most of it closed out, except for any audit adjustments, so...
Okay. I just want to ask where we're at relative to the commission reorganization that's been on the, kind of like the calendar of things to do?
I've got it scheduled for the 17th. I've been pushing it further and further, and I says, well, this guy can't go any longer, so we'll have it on the agenda, on the work session for the 17th.
And my last request is, and I don't want you to think this is self-serving, this is more of an education, because sometimes we make decisions and we have, there may be some unintended consequences, but I think at some point in the near future, we're going to be voting on the lease with LET for the remodeling of the lobby to put in a transfer station. And I would appreciate, even though I'm not too bad at reading blueprints, I would appreciate if the city administration could tape off in the lobby where the proposed walls are going to go. So at our next council meeting, before we have our workshop, the council can go over there and see how much of the lobby is going to be closed off and how much of the curtain wall is no longer going to be seen by people that walk into City Hall or people that are in City Hall before we make that decision. I mean, we looked at the digital photos from the architect, but I think you need to take a look at it in person to really get an idea of what the remodeling is going to result in before we make a decision.
It's the last iteration, we aren't changing anything in the lobby area, you know. It literally will be limited to where the credit union would be. I think there might be some small area out into the plaza area, but not a lot, so...
See, I thought the last plans I saw that it was based on the mayor's concern about the maintaining the hallway, that there was going to be an extension into the lobby.
And that was actually the last presentation you saw, but as a follow-up internally, we've been working to keep it within the current wall so that the lobby area will not change at all.
Then I am glad that I asked, because I was not aware that those modifications have been made.
And it just, the other thing with it, I tentatively have it scheduled for our meeting on the 17th. We put the structure together for an agreement with LET, and we're still waiting back, I think, from comments from SMART and the feds, who have to provide some approval, but if we hear anything back before then, we will, you know, put it on the 17th, and if not, we'll push it further into October, but the footprint doesn't change, no.
Does Kohler have a revised plan?
They haven't went that far with it, other than just a rough sketch, but they haven't went through the full plan.
Okay.
But we can, we can definitely do that, so...
Great, thank you. That's all I have here. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments, announcements, all of Councilman Felder, as I did at my last meeting, regarding the back-to-school and the teachers and students, but remind everybody that they're excited to be out there and run around the area and potentially with cars and that, so there's more traffic, there's more students, and everybody just to be mindful of that, slow down, and be cautious around the schools and the students that are enjoying their time back to school. There's a few announcements coming up that are posted. There's a River Walk Public Engagement Session regarding, it's been reported a couple times, regarding the River Walk in the city and potential improvements and extensions to the DDA. The session's going to be held at Serendipitous, which is at 403 East Front Street. If the weather is permissible, there'll be some opportunities to walk the River Walk as well, make some comments. I think they have ideas for some poster boards and things like that, but part of that, because I did get some inquiries about that, not just why's, but whats, and I just said, well, as it was stated in, through the DDA, that there's, obviously seeking grant funding opportunities, whether they be some GATT grants or other grants to help, match funds and have a lesser cost to the city, but improvements that are well needed when you talk about lighting and some other aesthetics there, but also the future plans of extending the River Walk, as we've talked about before. That is on Wednesday, I guess better give the date and time, but Wednesday, September 12th, 3:00 to 6:30 PM. So Wednesday, September 12th, is the River Walk Public Engagement Session, beginning at 3:00 PM. Next is the Rally on the Raisin, which of course with our National Park and the Battlefield, Battlefield Foundation is having the annual, this is our second annual Rally on the River Raisin event. It is scheduled for Saturday, September 15th, begins at noon, there'll be a parade through town, the Jeep parade, as it was last year, there was a lot of Jeeps that came in, and actually it was kind of fun out at the park as well, very Jeep enthusiasts that were there. That begins at noon, and the event goes until 5:30, so please come out to the National Park downtown first for the parade, but also National Park afterwards for the activities that are planned there. Next is, there's a program that's a little bit further, about the same time out, but it's through the Rotary Club, Rotary International, they're having a community, I'll call it Summit, it's a peace summit that they're having, it's on September 18th. It begins at 6:00 PM, it goes from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It'll be held at the former Monroe Multi-Sports Complex, and it is open to all, they're looking to, want to be heard, and opportunities for the community to come together and talk about items not only in our community, in our state, in our country, but it's a peace summit. It is to be inspiring, there'll be some presentations and facilitations, opportunities to be engaged and speak and share this date. So again, that is Tuesday, September 18th at 6:00 PM. I think that is all my comments for this evening. Mr. Trezor, what?
I just have a few comments tonight. Many of you have probably heard of the FOIA request that was made to clerks across Michigan requesting copies of each and every ballot that was cast in 2016 presidential election. And I plan to give you a bit more of an update at the work session next time we get together in terms of the progress, Bud, Attorney Bud's and myself have been working on it, we've filed an extension, and we are working on estimating the costs and the time that it will take to then submit it to the organization that requested. will take to then submit it to the organization that requested. Because of the upcoming election in November, which is quite a heavy lift for most clerks' offices, most of us are probably going to really begin to respond to that after the election, but we're doing everything that we're supposed to do according to procedures to respond to that. As a follow-up, I got an email the other day, and apparently there's another similar FOIA floating around, except instead of a copy, I believe they want to actually come in and view each ballot, so stay tuned. I may, that's part of the other reason I'm waiting to see if we actually receive that, and then I can give you a full update. But we are working, and we will make sure that we recoup the cost to the, to the city and therefore the residents.
Your Honor.
Yes.
May I ask, is this a federal commission that's asking for this, or is this a nonprofit? Or who's asking?
It's a nonprofit, that's a good question. It's Priority USA Foundation, a nonprofit affiliated with a super PAC. So they, they are the ones that are requesting it. And I'll have a little bit more information next week, but it took some digging to find that out. It was quite the mystery for quite a long time, the letter was simply signed Emily, so it, it was interesting. But the great thing about this is Michigan is one of eight decentralized states when it comes to elections, and the clerks in municipalities, large and small, are handling this with the utmost professionalism, and their primary concern on the blogs has been to ensure the protection of the voters and the secret ballot, and while still fulfilling our obligation for transparent government. And so I've been very proud of my profession while we've been going through this. The other item I wanted to bring up is we are continuing to make changes in the clerk treasurer's office to run more efficiently and hopefully improve customer service. We, at one point, when we had talked about reconfiguring the first floor, there were going to be some changes that we thought would help. Because we are no longer doing that, we've taken to making changes within the office to open the office up a bit more, to make sure that staff is able to better see residents when they come to the counter for assistance. So as you come into City Hall, stop by, you'll see, you'll see some differences, and I'll have another announcement in the next couple of weeks about another change we're making that I think will be great, especially come tax season, so I'm looking forward to that. Other than that, if you haven't registered to vote, you want to make sure you do that by October 9th. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pastu?
Don't have anything, Your Honor.
Okay, before I go to citizens, I just want to make another comment on the peace summit. One of the items for that summit and bringing the community together is promoting peace through effective dialogue. So that's the, kind of the gist of the meeting. I know that Pat Barley's here from Rotary, he may, international, and he may want to speak as well. So at this time, citizens' comments, the comments from those present here this evening? Any comments, or the comments to be made? Seeing none?
Your Honor, seeing no other citizens' comments, I move that the council meet in closed session under Section 8 of the Open Meetings Act to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy relating to the following matters involving the city: Stacy Hall, 44 South Monroe LLC, 48 South Monroe LLC, Brett Wagner, and Tracy Mick's harms.
Second. Motion by Councilman Michael Angeli, supported by Councilman Lamore, to go into closed executive session for the specific nature in which it was reported and stated by the councilman. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Michael Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.